Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to begin tonight's board meeting. I want to stand in front of the chair.
... America, to the revolting police hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With everything I thank, thank you all for attending tonight's meeting, either here or Zoom. As you can see by the agenda, there are a few items pertaining to the votes election. The votes election will be held on Tuesday, March fifteenth, at St. Paul's, from twelve noon to nine p.m. Please get up and vote. Where if you're unable to come out and vote on that day, fill out an absentee ballot application and you'll be mailed or given an absentee ballot so that you can cast your vote. I would also like to thank at this time the village workers who were involved in clearing the roads during the recent snowstorm. Everyone involved did an excellent job and we all gratefully appreciate your efforts in keeping this safe. And another subject, Philip San Antonio, a member of the architectural design review board since 2015, has announced his resignation effective January twenty-sixth, 2022. I wish to personally thank Philip for his service to the village and wish him all the best. I served with him under E. G. R. B. for several years. I would now like to call upon the department heads, starting with Commissioner Jackson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda. I just want to remind everybody, there is still a program pattern in Nassau County regarding homes between three o'clock and six-thirty, seven o'clock at night. When you leave your house, please leave lights on and also radio or TV. You want to make it look like your home, please, if you're leaving, leave the house for a couple minutes. If you haven't alone, leave it on and make sure all doors are locked. Also, with car losses, we've had a couple incidents with car losses, but we're getting more incidents where people are checking cars and not getting in because people are locking them. So we're seeing a lot of more people locking their doors and that is a good thing. Again, it is a big pattern throughout the county. And last but not least, when you have your vehicle, especially the new model cars, if you leave your fob in the car, a lot of times the mirrors will stick out because the fob's in the car, you take the fob out with you when you get out of the car and the mirrors close. So please, the bad guys know that and they look for those type of cars that you go dump in and take off of them. And again, that's an ongoing pattern in Nassau County, actually to the tri-state area. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Next is Assistant Fire Chief Matthew Burn. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to the rest of the board trustees. We have nothing on the formal agenda, probably happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Mayor, if I could make a comment. Last night, one of my clients in Menial, actually the nights at Columbus that I belong to, there was a fire right next to it. It was actually on a pole. So I got calls and of course I went over to see what was going on and I was kind of gratified to see the GCFD on the back of a lot of the firemen and Chief Pern and I were there and he gave me an update on what was going on with the fire. So again, I want to commend you guys.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you. Village Treasurer, I read more.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Tonight on the agenda, item number one, the village assessor has completed the tentative assessment role and it is now available on the village website under the finance department. Item number two are the proposed dates to hold the public work sessions for the budget presentations in anticipation of adopting the budget in early April at the organizational meeting. Item number three is request to appropriate $3,171 and $26 from the reserve for compensated absences for two employees who have left village service. And item number four are transfer of funds requested by village administrator Swazi and he will discuss these items later on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next is Village Superintendent Giuseppe. Do you have anything?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm on the board. Good evening. I also have nothing on the formal agenda tonight, but I think he wanted to have any answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has one item on the agenda tonight and that is under award of bids number fourteen. We are requesting authorization to rescind a bid for the renovation of the Edgemere Court Basketball Court, which was awarded to Land Tech. They have informed the village that at this time, they are unable to do this work. So we are further requesting authorization to rebid the project. And that's all we have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As common, I have no one item on the agenda. I have worked with each of the department heads on virtually all of the agenda items, but none are stemming from my office.
Let's go on to the agenda. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items?
Mr. Oros.
Unname yourself, Mr. Oros, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't know if you want all of this, but I'm looking at items twelve and thirteen. I'd like to have a little clarification on what happened there. Back in October of last year, Cameron Engineering was given this pass for the amount of about And now we have someone new for a cost of $255,500. What happened? I mean, is Cameron out, this one in, and why is it double the price?
Giuseppe, do you want to answer this?
No.
Sure. Ralph is on the call. If you want Ralph to answer, he's not even going to answer, Mayor.
No, Ralph, he can do his report. He just texted me, he wants to do his report.
Is Ralph here? Yes.
I'm here, Mayor.
Okay. Ralph, do you want to answer this question or do you want me to answer it?
We can all answer it, I guess, in one way or another, but it's, I'll answer before you, Mayor, then you can jump in if you like. So, Mr. Oros, I was going to give my update, one of the American poll we have covered, but basically, twelve and thirteen, the Edgemere Fire Station, back on October, the board declared a health and safety emergency declaration so we could bypass the normal process. Nonetheless, Cameron Engineering was hired to go in and evaluate premises, the fire station. They came up with a multiple, multi-phase approach, but the first phase was split up into phase one A and one B. One A being to make the place inhabitable for firefighters. And that involved basically weatherproofing the building through both permanent and temporary means, also to abate any asbestos and mold. They were to scope out the project and then they brought in competent contractors who were capable of performing this work to size up, make a proposal. So this is not substituting Cameron. Cameron's still in the picture, they will be overseeing this work, they are a construction manager, they're the ones who scoped it out, they're the ones who brought in the people to size it up and give us proposals. So these, both twelve and thirteen, you add them up, total of about $626,000. The budget is signed to the phase one A, $1,250,000. So this is well within the budget, even given Cameron's oversight role. And they were going to deliver $1,000. So we have plenty of room here for any possible change orders we might anticipate with this type of work. These were the lowest bidders on both of these components. There was, in fact, in thirteen, we had another vendor who wanted to charge $961 for the same work. They chose the vendor three seventy, who's quite competent. So they're watching out for the taxpayer dollars, they're doing what they asked to do, and after tonight, they'll advance this work.
Oh, Ralph, let me make a comment, Ralph. I don't think Cameron Engineering is looking out for taxpayer dollars, I think we are. That's the point I want to make. And I also apologize, Ralph, because I didn't see you being available this evening, and since you are available, can you go over some of the budget items that you want to speak about this evening?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board and residents. Item number four, Mrs. Wu mentioned, the transfers, four A and four B. First, one A, $60,000 to the engineer contractual service line, $50,000 to be transferred from regular salary of the street administration, and $10,000 from the engineer regular salary. These are open positions that the board has allowed us to use in previous transfers to cover professional engineering services. This transfer is needed to fund additional external engineering services that are enabling the engineering department to oversee and design, I'm sorry, that are enabling engineering department to oversee the design and development of multiple village capital projects in parallel. These professional services were obtained via RFPs and were strategically aligned to match the needed engineering skills required to get the job done, while allowing our in-house engineers to continue with their, with other capital project initiatives, while simultaneously managing and overseeing the work of these additional resources. This has been working very well since last to get projects designed and out to bid faster than what we were doing when we were fully staffed internally. Trustee Deegan meets with myself and village treasurer Wu every couple weeks, all with progress as we work through approximately sixty capital projects in the general fund. Item B, $100,000 to village justice. This transfer is necessary to fund the fees paid to FBS, which is fundamental business services, for their efforts in collecting payments for overdue parking fines. At the October 2020 VOT meeting, 2021, our VOT meeting, the board approved FBS as a vendor for the village justice court. The fee amounts to be paid or generated from the revenues being collected from these previously unpaid and aging parking violations. At the October meeting, it was stated that the new revenues would pay for the fees. However, the payment process relies on the village receiving the fines first and then paying FBS. FBS does not receive the payments first and forward the net proceeds to the village. So during the preparation of the 21, 22 fiscal budget we're in right now, this vendor FBS and this fee payment structure were not in play and therefore no funds were placed in the budget for any payments. The finance department has now established a new budget line within the village justice label contractual services, FBS. We're asking to transfer this $150,000 to this new line item so that we can pay the existing and any subsequent invoices to FBS through the end of May this year. As this is a new method of collection and payment without historic data, the village finance department will continue to monitor the payments to validate the data against historic norms. As the old air scanning tickets decrease, the monthly invoices should level off at some point in the future. Item number nine, professional rate services renewal, corporate electric services. Board authorization is requested to engage corporate electric service for electrical work in village facilities. The rates are on file with village clerk, business for needed electrical services and prevailing wage anywhere we need it in any of our facilities. Number ten, professional rate services renewal, wired order electrical services. Order authorization is to engage wired order contractors for the period of January one, twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty-three. The hourly rate scheduled on file with village clerk. This is also for needed services at the well sites where they program the SCADA system, the secondary control system that keeps an eye on all the wells, and this is also prevailing wage. Number eleven, sanitary sewer maintenance rehab. Board authorization is requested to engage Nelson and Pope Engineering, Architecture and Land Surveying, P L L C, to perform a televised inspection and evaluation of the existing condition. This transfer is to provide funding for, I'm sorry, I got my, this is for Whitehall Sewer Main between up to Maryland Avenue. Whitehall is a very deep main. About three and a half years ago, we had a break there, about a 20-foot length, it cost about a quarter million dollars to repair that simple 20-foot lane. So this is a proactive maintenance project to have an inspect line and to come up with design recommendations for how we can strengthen and rehabilitate it. So that'll be approved by engineers once we see the design. And this has a cost of $250,500. Number twelve and thirteen, where we started this conversation, board authorization is required to engage par environmental cooperation for asbestos mitigation at the engineer firehouse. It also includes mold, that's all. At a cost of $255,500, the board declared an emergency at the October 21st, 2021 VOT meeting, for reasons of health and safety. Cameron Engineering was engaged to identify such emergency work and requirements for public bidding and/or alternative proposals with respect to these matters were waived. Cameron has defined the scope of work, invited multiple contractors who are capable of performing this set of work to the fire station. This award is based on the lowest responsible proposals received. Thirteen is the same, except it's for C board weatherproofing restoration for temporary weatherproofing and masonry work at the engineer firehouse. Again, Cameron defines the scope of work, they invite the contractors in, and this is the lowest responsible bidder for this work at $377,000. A total of $626,000, a change, $626,000, a change, well below the $1,250,000 assigned to this phase one A of this larger project. Any questions they have, okay.
Could I ask a question again?
Thank you, Ralph. Yes, Mr. Wazos, you can go again.
Okay. What is, what is defined as temporary waterproofing? Either waterproof or you don't waterproof, what's temporary?
Well, you probably haven't been in the building in many years, Mr. Oros, but
I haven't, no.
Right, the masonry is in varying condition, different condition, so there are multiple phases to this, to tackle the whole thing at once, would have been drawn out, long process. By doing your phases, phase one was to make the building habitable so that men and women who volunteer to serve in this community are not exposed to these hazardous elements. And that the water, which is infiltrating the building, especially at the wholesale area, which is, which is an exacerbating problem, that, that can stop. So some of the, some of the fixes might be somewhat permanent, but some might be tarping in areas because the, the further phases will require a deeper level of, of work. So, so the word temporary is used because this is a multi-phase thing, but the thing is we want to, we want to basically make sure the building's not taking in water. So whatever means, cost effective means, you can do so, assess the evaluation of the subsequent phases the board needs to approve, that's what's being done.
Who evaluates that, how much it's going to cost? $370,000, that's a lot of money for, to put a tarp on. I mean, who comes up with these numbers? Our engineers or someone verifying that this is how much it's going to cost to do the work, or how's that done?
So, well, we bought Cameron Engineering, one of their professional engineering firm. They also, back in 2018, at the board's request at that time, they did a full evaluation of all three of the buildings, which had deteriorated further, or this one specifically, from that point. So they're bought in because they're familiar with this, they work in this area, and other buildings of this nature in New York City, they've got over three, four, five hundred of these things. And so they are quite capable of identifying both the problems and the type of work need to bring this thing back into, you know, good use. So that's how they were chosen. Now, this, if you think that two, the three seventies is a lot of money, Mr. Oros, then you will never get to phase one A. This one A project is just to keep this building from taking more water, which is detrimental to the building itself, the wiring, everything in it. So there's a lot of work to go on. I don't have it in front of me, you know, piece by piece. If the mayor wants later in call, I believe the engineers are there, they could probably scope it out, just that you might go to fill in, but this is a lot of work and this is, you know, it's labor and materials. And they have to do it delicately than not doing something from scratch, they're dealing with the existing structure, so everything they touch is connected to something else.
I realize that. We're talking about a building that's what, about seventy-five hundred square foot building? The house on all of Lamele is nothing but a garage, a three, three base garage. So I'm wondering where all this cost is generated? That's just for me, I don't know. If I have work done on my house, something like that, I want to know where, why I'm paying and what I'm paying for.
I don't have the details in front of me, I'm sorry, Mr. Oros.
Okay, all right. We only can do what we can do.
Yes, sir.
Very much.
Ralph, any other, any other comments?
No, it's just good to see everybody.
I hope you're feeling better. Feel better, Ralph.
I'm feeling better, thank you, Mayor. I'll watch.
Are there any other comments on agenda items? Please state your name.
Michael Doham, thirty-three years in the world. Just a clarification, Mr. Swazi indicated that there were multiple bids, I'm just trying to understand, this was subject to competitive bidding?
Well, I think it was exempt because there was emergency action, but what happened was we asked Cameron Engineering to get multiple bids for the mold remediation and the asbestos removal in addition to the waterproofing. So there were other contractors that bid. These are the two lowest bids that we found.
How many bids were on each?
I think three.
On each? Okay, that's all right.
You're welcome. Any other comments on agenda items, please? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Should we move on, Tom?
Yes. Any trustees?
Any trustee, any comments at all?
Actually, I just wanted to share two things from the environmental advisory board. First, thank you to John Riley for doing a very informative educational piece on lead and drinking water. And as of this morning, the PowerPoint from that presentation is on the website. It's also been shared on our Facebook page. So I encourage everyone, if you missed the presentation, please go through the PowerPoint, share it with neighbors, friends, relatives. We are continuing to focus on getting the word out on lead education in the village, lead in the water education. The other thing on the horizon with the EAB is we have Elizabeth Bailey, Leo Stimler, and Bonnie Gia working on our next water presentation, and that is on Wednesday, February sixteenth, it will be in person or by Zoom. And I thank them for their work on preparing for this. They're bringing in a guest speaker, Sarah Malin, who's a water specialist, background in groundwater protection, water resources management and environmental law. She's an associate professor of the Department of Environmental Technology and Sustainability, NYIT College of Engineering and Computer Sciences. She's a member of the New York State Drinking Water Quality Council and is an ex-officio member of LICAP. She did come to the village previously and spoke and had a, you know, there's a big turnout, we're hoping for the same. I know water is a topic on everyone's mind, so I hope you'll be able to join us for that meeting.
Excellent job, trustee Flanagan, of putting that committee together and that program we had together.
I was about to say the same. Ready to go?
Okay, the next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the previous board of trustees meetings. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January fifth, 2022 special board meeting?
I'll move it down here.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January thirteenth, 2022 board meeting? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's move on to the consent calendar. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments on the consent calendar or remove any items from the consent calendar? Let's see, now make a motion.
I'll move the consent down a bit.
Okay, make your motion, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Peter, you want to talk about any new business regarding the formal agenda, please?
Yes, sir. My description of the local law I'd like to do as part of the public hearing, however, in brief, these two local laws address the licensing of landscapers and also in the second local law, they deal with a specific ban or proposed ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. And I would say that trustee Eric Carter Flanagan has really been instrumental in leading the charge on this, and we've gone through multiple drafts. I think the current drafts are pretty much in line with what the environmental advisory board had recommended, but I will put that into the public hearing as part of the record.
Thank you. Moving along, moving rapidly this evening.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
I apologize, to set the date, is there a motion to set the date?
Set the date, yes.
The second?
All in favor, say aye, yes.
For the date is the second. February fifteenth on each of the two proposed local laws.
February fifteenth.
Very good, sir.
Thank you. Next, we go into, any comments on non-agenda items? We'll have citizens speak first. Please come up to the audio, state your name, please.
Ed Fenner in three oh one Franklin. Good evening, folks. Any update, Mr. Mayor, on the situation over at the cathedral?
Nothing yet. We're in contact with the cathedral, with the incident and the Episcopal Church, but we have not received any, any feedback yet. So we're working on it.
Good. Thank you.
Again, non-agenda items, please? Anyone on Zoom? Say it again.
Anyone, anybody on, anyone on Zoom wish to speak?
Earring done?
Anybody on Zoom? Wait, I have somebody raising their hand, I think.
I'll give them the nod.
Or is that an applause?
It's applause.
Oh, Judy Courtney. Go ahead, Judy.
Sorry, Karen, I couldn't figure out the words. Judy Courtney, from each street. My question is, can someone explain to me why the reference or dedication page to the community agreement was removed from the annual report?
I'm not aware of that.
Is anyone aware?
I didn't even know that.
In what page?
Could you repeat that? Judy?
Say again, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, there is a page, and there always has been, in the annual report about the community agreement, and it is not in this year's, this year's annual report.
I'm not aware of that.
We can check with Carissa, and we'll let you know, we'll check with Carissa.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Steve Alardi?
Yes, how you doing? Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. Today, there was an event at Townehamstead regarding Governor Hochul's state budget proposal, which has a proposal in there to eliminate single-family home zoning across New York State. Many of the villagers participated in that event. I've been specifically see Garden City mentioned, I don't know if anyone from Garden City was present at it. Is the village taking any action to let the governor know if we would be against such a proposal that's buried in her budget, which allows, eliminates single-family zoning and mandates that localities permit accessory dwelling units, which are apartments that are currently zoned as a single family?
Mayor, as you and I have been discussing, that proposal is in, I think it was somewhat summarized, but that's the heart of the matter that was in the governor's budget proposal, along with another area called transit-oriented development, two areas which seem to be contrary to the concept of local zoning. And both the Nassau County Village Officials Association and the Suffolk County Village Officials Association are working with the New York State COM, NICOM, Conference of Mayors, and are opposed to that legislation. My most recent information is that there is a likelihood that that will be withdrawn from the governor's budget. That has not happened as of this afternoon, to the best of my knowledge, but there are on both sides of the aisle, Republican and Democrat, there is a strong call for that to be removed from the budget. And I will certainly keep you and the board apprised of the status of that legislation.
Thank you. Is that a good enough answer, Mr. Alardi?
I'm just curious, did the village of Garden City have any official statement to the governor regarding this? Like I said, are the villagers out in support?
No, we have not made a, we have not made a public statement regarding this issue.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, I would hold off making any public statement until we see exactly what, if it is withdrawn, that's fine. If it's not withdrawn, I would hold off until I saw that, how the legislation would set forth. Based upon our past history in this area, I would be very cautious as to what position we take.
I concur, trustee Delaney, 100%. There have been a number of mayors that are adamantly opposed to it and they publicly said it, so maybe at some point, yeah.
At some point, I agree with you, Bruce, but right now, hopefully it's withdrawn. On the face of it, I'm not sure it would pass the smell test or the New York State Constitution. Well, yeah, Mayor, although not on behalf of Garden City individually, I will tell you that I have been actively involved in the community you that I have been actively involved in the communications amongst the Nassau BOA, the Suffolk BOA, and NICOM, and are working on a number of letters of opposition.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Any other comments? Any more Zoom, Karen? Okay, now I'll make the motion to close the meeting.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much for coming, everyone.